All right, being five o'clock. Agenda review and disposition, any changes, additions?
Just one addition under discussion items, under health insurance update from Dan.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Privilege of the floor, welcome Tyrell. Nice to see you. You guys have anything or, okay, thanks for coming. All right, approval of the minutes, September 5th. Does anyone have any questions or any changes or see anything?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Seconded by Paul. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining attendance, okay. All right, great. Student report, welcome.
We have Jasmine come over here for our student rep. We always had a student rep, but now it's in law. We have one, so Mrs. Eccleston, Mr. Parsons, myself, and Jasmine attended a training with the New Hampshire School Board Association a few weeks ago, so she's ready to go. I don't know if it'd be helpful if we just went around to say what town you represent and kind of see who's who on the board here before you do your report. So, Dan?
Oh, I'm not on the school board. My name is Dan Ross from the business administration.
I'm Barbara Noyce, and I represent the town of Plymouth.
I'm Peter Petten Gill, I represent Campton.
Phil McCormick, and I represent Holernes.
Hey Jasmine, Paul Ciati representing for it.
Greg Affrilliano, Plymouth.
Lisa Ash, Plymouth.
Lexi Taylor, Campton.
Sam Reckley, I'm from Holernes.
Paul Pizano, Ashland.
Jasmine is from Ashland.
Yeah, I'm from Ashland.
Welcome, really excited to have you.
Do a quick bio of you, Jeff. You also play volleyball, right?
Yeah, I just got out of practice in volleyball.
Ready?
Floor's up.
So, I've learned a lot of things about school that's happened in the past like month or two. So, for sports, we have football, obviously they're like pretty good this year. Their record so far right now is four to one. Boys soccer is also doing really good, their record is four to three. For volleyball, we have a Dig Pink game this Friday. I don't know if you're familiar with Dig Pink Foundation, but they basically, it's a foundation where they fundraise for people that have breast cancer and stuff, like breast cancer awareness. We have that upcoming this Friday. We're gonna do a bake sale, a raffle, raffle prizes, a fifty-fifty raffle, and all proceeds that we collect are going to the foundation. For clubs, we have Quiz Bowl last Saturday, they had a meet here, and a bunch of teams from New Hampshire, Maine, Massachusetts got together for a quiz competition. Plymouth came in third, Hanover second, and Belmont, Mass in first. So, I'm obviously in Student Senate, and right now, we don't have a chair because not a lot of people were there for the meeting last week, or week, but we're gonna find one. And for topics this year, we want to go over, obviously, the dress code, we always do that, vending machines we want to look into, again, some benches outside, and the tardy policy. And also this year, Kelsey Main is trying to organize a volunteer little thing over the weekend at the senior center. We also want to get into more volunteer, like community service opportunities. Youth in government, the event this year for the pre-ledge is March 16th, and the main event is April 12th through 13th. NHS recently had their Pema Youth Center car wash, and all the proceeds went to the Pema Youth Center. HOSA is doing a New Hampshire conference at UNH, and it's gonna be Friday, November 17th, 2023. And basically what that is, they're gonna go, they're gonna meeting with all the high schools in New Hampshire that have HOSA clubs, just like conference, talk about what they're doing and stuff. Osepi, this month is October, and this Friday, I think, is Think Pink Friday, and we also have a Gray Out football game Friday the 13th. Past couple weeks, we had homecoming, which is a big success for me because seniors won. Summer theme days, we had Bald Cat Pride, Neon Day, Senior First Teacher, which was really fun because I got to wear a bald cap. We had our pep rally on Friday, everyone had class cheers, tug of wars, and the end result was juniors versus faculty, and faculty won. We had a class video, homecoming court, and the winners were announced. We also had a football game on Saturday, and that was against Laconia, and that was forty-eight to twelve, we won. We just had the dance, so the money collected from that Saturday dance is going to our senior prom. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Jasmine.
Jasmine is also sitting on the principal committee as well, so she's just.
Thank you, excellent. We look forward to having you. Nice job.
Thank you.
All right, principal report, so we'll skip on over that right now. Hallway.
Kids, are they weren't supposed to be?
Committee progress report, teaching and learning. Who, Peter is that, no, Phil, sorry, Phil.
For the teaching and learning committee, our discussion items, if you have your past agendas, but focused on curriculum instruction and an assessment update, and under that topic, we heard about the curriculum design plan. We reviewed the annual goals that were mentioned. Explained the use of faculty learning time for the year, which I thought was pretty insightful to have that, to see what the focus is. With respect to the new program update, she shared the reaction, the student reaction to the dance and outdoor leadership. Three sections of dance are being offered this semester. The plan is to introduce an artist in residence. I don't know if you've had that before, or was this the first time you've had artists in residence here?
This will be the first time we've had this program.
Oh.
But I've had it before the art program.
Yeah, yeah, which I think is an excellent program. That'll be for a week in October. The intro to theater is working on a silent one-act play, which I thought was kind of unique.
Yeah, performing on Thursday, too, at eleven fifteen.
Okay.
Invited a lot of them.
The fall, the fall play is scheduled for November 17th through the 18th, and there are two sections of that program. Lastly, with the review of the school board assessment goal, so that was pretty much what the discussion was, but it was quite insightful, I thought, so, thank you.
Great, Peter, do you want to do school operations, and then we'll go back to?
Sure. Any changes to the agenda on this? I'm sorry. No. Okay, we're gonna review the minutes of May 16th, which I assume is fresh in everybody's memory, but do I hear a motion to accept them?
Motion.
Second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand, okay. We had the public comment policy, the first reading, it's in your packet for this week. As I understand, there's two readings, and then it comes to the board, or is there one reading and it comes to the board?
It's up to you, you can do it on one reading, there was a unanimous vote to bring it to.
Yeah, okay, then let's, let's just bring it to the board. We'll go over that at this point, or does it have to be a separate?
You can do it at this point, it's fine, I have it on.
Has everybody read it? It's in the, it's brief, it's four bullets long. Any discussion on it, any questions, any comment?
Peter, I just wanted to jump in, so just to refresh everybody's memory on this, so people come, and they don't necessarily know protocol and what we've all been trained in, and like say in Concord, where I was trained. So, we just talked about having somewhat of a pamphlet that would, when someone walks through the door, they would receive that, whether it's families, or whether it's students, parents, adults, and they would kind of know the protocol at the meeting, so they wouldn't be caught off guard with different things that we're bound to following, you know, expecting to be able to have a dialogue back and forth, there's something I was trained were not allowed to do, and just things like that. So, we first decided to create the policy and then create kind of an informational, so we wanted to limit it, so I'd have the ability to adjust, whether we have a full house, whether we have a smaller group of people, we can give them more time to talk. If it's a fuller house, maybe we would create a time limit. So, that's where this all came from, for those that just needed that refresher information.
Okay.
Thanks, sorry.
It's fine, do we have any questions or comments on it? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the public comment policy as presented.
As written, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Everybody who's in favor, please sit, raise your hand. Anybody opposed? It's passed. The second thing we did was the emergency plan for sports-related injuries, the first reading. Again, it's in your packet, I believe it was unanimously accepted to go to the board tonight, but this is a little bit longer. I would personally feel better if I had another, another chance to look it over a little more detail.
Just a recap, if you don't mind.
No, go for it.
So, this policy is required as a, as a new statute this year, and basically the policy that you have in front of you says that we will have protocols and procedures in place for anything in regards to heat mitigation, to hydration, it has all the safety requirements around that piece. We already have the protocols in place that have been checked. This is just the policy saying, basically, we're following the requirements, but we've already had the protocols.
So, they're all in place, and this is just sort of mirroring it, kind of?
It says you have to have protocols in place, basically, and you already have them in place, you have to use actually those three really hot days.
Well, under those circumstances, do I hear a motion to accept this?
Well, I think I probably should do that, right?
What's that?
He's committee, so he's parted up to the full board, so I'll have everybody vote on that, Peter, which I don't think.
Yeah, you can do it now.
Okay, all right. So, Peter, I'm gonna take over just as the chair.
Yep, okay.
All right, so, do I hear a?
One last thing, we had Bruce explain all, where we stood on all of facility projects, and we were done after that.
Excellent, all right, so a motion to approve our changes to the emergency plan for sports-related injuries, and we'll not go on a second reading.
I'll make a motion.
Seconded by?
No, second.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, abstaining, attendance issues, anything like that, all right, great, okay. Thanks, Peter.
We're done.
We're done, okay, awesome, thanks. Mr. Parsons, your first report.
Jasmine did a great job, honestly, so really made my job pretty easy. Just want to give you what's going on. Phase is coming pretty quick, I think you'll enjoy the bedtime reading. But, the specials in there, I think if you go, the pictures are great. Jasmine was right, it was probably the most, one of the most enthusiastic pep rallies I've attended. Lloyd Wells was off the wall. But, if you can turn to second page, do you picture the graduation, one of the high school community? We'll be at that, but we're one of the five schools in state that received, gonna be receiving this National Unified Leadership Award, which is a real big deal. And hats off to Dinae and staff, we have unified soccer, obviously, basketball, and we're in full tilt. The picture below is our cat program, kids get out once a week down the senior center, and they take care of it the way they were requested, because they provide the meals. That's a big deal within A&amp;T, so I'm hoping, I don't know what the ceremony is gonna look like, but I think it's gonna be here, so if it is, I'll have an assembly with the kids and they present to the mayor, whatever, to us and them. So, again, the others is pretty much everything that Jasmine went over, but we send that home. The only thing I'm waiting for now is, I may have to change the date of this, French Armed Society, that may be a conflict, but that will go, because keep in mind, November 14th is the conference night in Paris, it's an open house, usually well-attended here. I do, I need a motion for this next piece I'm gonna present, our outdoor rec is, we're asking for it overnight, and it would involve anywhere from eight to twelve students. They're leaving Friday the 3rd, returning the next day, the 4th, these are the kids that are in that program, they'll be well-supervised, there'll be a male, obviously the teacher, the outdoor teacher, and possibly the school nurse, and they're gonna be hiking out in the White Mountains close by, the tents, all of that stuff that we get, we contract service out of the ADAP program, unfortunately, we will provide, obviously, the food in that piece, and again, it's anywhere from eight to twelve kids, and it's for those kids in the program. They'll be doing what they do in their classroom and start taking this stuff on the road, but I will take these overnights to you as I get them, and again, I won't reach you on this, but the paperwork is pretty, pretty detailed. So, I will need a motion for an overnight for the outdoor recreation leadership.
Anyone have any questions, Barbara?
What are the dates on that?
November 3rd, they leave at two thirty, they take back Saturday by twelve.
Are they hiking up into the mountains, or pretty lovely?
Just on a trail, couple of trails.
Okay.
Dinner, all in details, dinner and a breakfast.
Any other questions? Okay, who would like to make that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll start, okay. All those in favor? Opposed, abstaining? Thanks, Blaney.
And then, teacher in service, I think Janice did an excellent job of telling you what she has planned for the teachers on the tent, that is a full in-service day, so we hope to accomplish a great deal on that page. Other than that matter, chair, Jasmine took care of everything for me.
Okay, great.
I'm good.
All right. Recognition for Kyla. So, I think some of you, I had reached out to some of you and let you know, some knew, some did not, that Kyla received the PSU Outstanding Graduate Alumni Award on Saturday, congratulations. They stated, Kyla led her school district through difficulties of the pandemic with compassion and intelligence, clearly communicating through multiple channels with regular updates on realities, challenges and changes. Through it all, Kyla kept student learning at the forefront while never compromising safety and health, which was for sure something you accomplished throughout that whole period. On behalf of the board, we just wanted to say thank you, feel like we're very fortunate to have you, and I think what's very cool is that, you know, your partnership within the community goes beyond these school buildings, and we appreciate that, you know, within the buildings, outside of the buildings, with families. I have my own amazing experience with Kyla where we hadn't even gone back to school, and I went to her and I said, I want to have camp, I want to have summer program, and you said, well, put something together. So, I went back to my office, and Kelsey Bowden, the woman I work with, we spent, oh gosh, days coming up with mitigation strategies and ten-page document, and we all met, and you said, go for it. You listened, and we went over everything, and I, that will be probably the most momentous experience I had with the town of Plymouth, in that we were just all so appreciative to be with each other, we could have done nothing but we did so much in spending time together. So, a lot of recreation departments asked me for our documents and all the mitigation strategies, and said, yeah, good luck, we're not doing that. But I had that experience with you. So, when I was down at PSU in a meeting, and I saw that the announcement of this, I was, I was very happy for you, because I feel like you, you strived daily to get there. And it was challenging, because we had a lot of people that were very scared and frightened, and it definitely was a scary time, so thank you for that, and I'd open it up if anyone else wants to share, or have anything else to say to.
I would just like to say thank you as well for everything.
Yeah, definitely, thank you.
Well, it wasn't easy, I thought it was gonna be run out of town the first year. Stay here, it was not an easy choice, but I will say that, you know, our values, our whole team's values is to get the kids back in the school. I didn't think we're both, no matter how difficult it was to get kids back in the school, I thought we could do it in a way that wasn't too complicated, so we did, but it was definitely a tough choice, and we see much, you know, a lot of criticism at the same time, so we had to be tougher at that part as well. But I'm glad we through it. Don't trust me for any other issue.
I mean, being in an elementary school myself, I, parents were very frightened, but to watch the students, I mean, they handled it with such grace and poise, and, you know, I'd be out and about in town and would hear, they're all in there without their masks, I'd be like, what are they talking about? That's not what's happening, but it was, at the end of the day, it was all about the students, and you made it all about the students, and it was great, because a lot of schools didn't go back till far after us, so that was, that was great, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, NHSBA delegate assembly appointment.
So, I'll take that one.
Okay.
Dr. McCormick is on the New Hampshire School Board Association Executive Board, so there's an opportunity for Phil to take part in the, in the delegate assembly, and to do so, we haven't had a participant in a while, but it is, it is great to have a participant, but as far as process, the board would need to appoint Phil to be your representative at that delegate assembly, so I'd ask that.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Wow, Phil's up for vote, huh? How long is this meeting gonna be now?
I make the motion that we move him forward to the delegate assembly.
Thanks, Barbara, seconded by Bernie, all those in favor? Opposed, abstaining, great, thank you so much. All right, and health insurance, too, is that an update?
We're gonna, sorry, I'm gonna move that to non-public, just inform you it's more of a non-public.
Okay, sounds good.
I did, I did just want to brief you on one little piece, just because there's always new information that comes up, and I just want to inform you, I don't know if you've heard, there's a new law that passed in regards to the Bridgewater, Hebron, Rockton District. There is, I've had lots of questions in the past several weeks probably about, have there been talks with Plymouth, because they came down to that area, there has been talk about, talks of kids from those towns coming to school here. We haven't had any official talks, if there's anything that comes forward, and we have talks, I will certainly let everybody know as we move into that, but basically what the law, what the law says is that they can withdraw from SAU four, which is New Found, with a different formula, basically than that's laid out, they went with their own piece, so that vote doesn't happen until March, so I wouldn't, I would expect maybe something before then, or not, but I just wanted to let you know that that's going on kind of to the south of us, so it's not a new concept by any means that this talk has gone on, but I just want to kind of inform you, if you get asked about it, there has been, obviously, you would be informed, something was happening, but there's just a lot of members from those towns that are asked, that are reaching out to us, saying, you know, to Dan or I, to see if the kids are coming here, so, well.
I was just approached about that today.
Yeah, so it's three towns, it was originally Bridgewater, Hebron, my understanding from their committee notes is they want to have the Bridgewater, Hebron school, K8 building, and then look at tuition agreement possibly, or something for the high school kids, so that's, I just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
I could be an error, probably am, but my understanding that a withdrawing district has to come up with a plan, and has to be presented to the State Board of Education in November, which is not that far away.
So, this new law is a little, is just for them, that is, is a workaround to all of that all.
Oh, no joke.
It's a law specifically that was written for them, yeah. It's interesting, if you get a chance, to look at the Hebron Town website, I think it's all on that.
Bridgewater, certainly.
I haven't paid much attention to it really, until recently, when it starts kind of overflowing.
It's enabling legislations exclusively for those three towns.
You think that they would have to have, have identified a plan for where those kids are gonna go, but if the law states they don't have to do that?
I think that, I think.
I think they do, but it's, I would just, I don't, I'm not well-versed in it at this point, I just want to, I just, when something starts circulating, I just like to give a heads up that. That needs to be something in the future that all of you will discuss, so.
Okay. All right. Other business, we have?
No other business.
Okay. Privilege of the floor?
I have a question, um, secretary of, the public comment policy that you all approved this evening, is, where is that available today?
The, so it will be posted after today, there is a few bullets in there, is it in the minutes, as far as it is in the minutes?
Where were the details of this policy discussed previous to the conversation that happened this evening?
We have three.
Committee?
Question, committee, yeah. Last week.
Yep, we worked on it.
In some posted committee meeting minutes somewhere on?
Yes, yep.
Which committee?
It was the, I think we just reviewed that.
Operations.
Operations.
School operations.
So, if I go online, is the school operations meeting minutes, I could review?
They were approved tonight, yeah.
No, I understand they were approved tonight.
Yeah, October 17th.
October 17th.
I'm sorry.
September 17th?
September 19th.
19th.
September 19th.
Okay, so the full details of that policy you approved this evening are all within those minutes?
The draft of it would have been, and then the.
And then obviously.
Policy will be posted on the school's website.
So, September 19th? So, I didn't look at the minutes?
Meeting was September 19th, so the minutes was September 19th, correct, I have a record.
Thank you.
I have a similar question about the emergency sports procedure plans, are those like on the athletics thing, or somewhere I can read those?
So, typically, none of the policies get posted until they're approved, so it's part of the board packets, but not typically part of a public packet.
Right, but imagine that those ones in particular, we already had in place, and we were just sort of formalizing.
No, 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 sorry, procedures, protocols in place, that's not public, it's an internal document that we already have in place that the administrators follow, so if you'd like to see it, we have that, but that's not something we post, it's just like a side protocol or anything like that, those are all internal procedures.
Great, thanks, yes?
Follow-up, just that the minutes of the full details of that policy are not posted in the minutes, it just says that the policy was discussed?
I think that's what Mrs. Wells just explained, it is an internal document reviewed by the subcommittee, and now that it's been approved by that committee, it will be posted on the school's website.
I understand what you're saying, as I understand it, this committee this evening approved a policy that hasn't been posted online.
What policy, sorry?
No, 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 it wouldn't have been.
Details of that policy is not posted in the minutes.
It wouldn't have been posted online because it wasn't.
So, they're not in the public meeting minutes?
No.
The agenda item that you have here indicates a first reading, so that implies that that policy would have been read into the public record this evening?
By committee. Came from committee.
Okay, I understand it came from committee, but this body approved a public comment policy that the public has had no opportunity to review or comment on?
Yeah, that's not accurate, we discussed it at the committee meeting two weeks ago.
You discussed it?
It was a public meeting, any person from the public was certainly welcome to come to the meeting.
But any details of that are not in the minutes of that meeting, so anybody who was unable to attend, the minutes are not available. It would be on the agenda though, wouldn't it?
It is on the agenda.
And it was, and it was noted in the minutes that it was moved to the full board for a first reading.
And you approved a policy that was a first reading, that was not read into public, that's not in the meeting minutes, that's not available anywhere for the public to have reviewed?
That's just not accurate.
I feel, I feel this is a gross violation.
We talked to committee two weeks ago.
A gross violation of the New Hampshireamiento Law, and I will be talking to the town administrator, because this, it doesn't seem like anybody in this group is doing anything but being defensive about this, as opposed to actually speaking to the contents of a policy that you approved about public comment. You didn't allow the public to review a public comment policy. It's atrocious, it's an atrocious treatment of the public. It's atrocious, it's an atrocious treatment of the public.
If I just may say one thing, it's in the July minutes, it's well in the retreat and it's been discussed numerous times over the past year. And then it's finally been put into the guidelines, which we talked about, for public comment, it was brought forth formally at the committee last week, last month to be approved, so that's.
Okay, all right, um, I guess a motion to go into not public for personnel, I'm gonna take roll call for everybody.
Yeah, I'll make that push to go in for personnel matters.
Yes, seconded by Paul, all right, and Greg, all right, Barbara, Peter, Phil, Paul, Greg, Vexy, Sam.